On behalf of the board, I welcome everyone this evening and call the annual meeting of the Linmar Community School Board of Directors to order here at 5 o'clock. John, will you please determine a quorum?
Director Buckholz.
Here.
Director Foss.
Here.
Director Mansour.
Here.
Director Maury.
Here.
Director Thomas.
Here.
Director Walker.
Here.
President LaLa Lancaster.
Here. We have a quorum. At this time, I would like to have a motion for our agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Barry and a second by Melissa. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. At this time, we want to welcome audience communication, and I believe that we have Paige, who's going to come to the microphone and speak to us. Welcome, Paige.
Hello. I'm Paige. I am president of our Linmar FFA chapter, and this past month, we traveled to Indianapolis for the National FFA Convention. This is a huge convention that every chapter from all over the nation comes to, even chapters from Alaska, Hawaii, the Virgin Islands, everywhere. There was over 164,000 members present. We attended the FFA opening session, which is a very energizing and exciting part. They run parliamentary procedure while there. We listened to powerful messages from the national FFA officers, as well as a keynote speaker who spoke about leadership and overcoming challenges. Another thing we did is we toured University Purdue, which is one of the top agricultural colleges in the country. We explored labs in agronomy, animal science, ag engineering, and ag business, which are a lot of careers that some of our members who we brought with us were interested in. We heard from professors and students about majors, internships, and career pathways to kind of help build our career and our college choices. Then we attended the Leadership Workshop, which was led by national-level speakers. We gained motivation and fresh ideas to bring back to the chapter. A lot of it was speaking about how influence can help you be a better leader, so bringing, being more personal with the people who you are leading. Then we explored the expo, which had tons of colleges, careers, everything like that that we could go and speak to and get information about, and everything like that. And then we did connect with chapters from surrounding states, namely Cumberland, Illinois. And we went to Topgolf. We did a lot of different interesting things, interesting and fun things with them to kind of build connections with local chapters. With all of this action, we did have time to relax and kind of build friendships within our group of people. Personally, my biggest takeaway from this was being a better leader, learning to lead the people who I am trying to show the way, I guess, in agriculture, and having confidence and showing inspiration and everything like that. It's also helping me like to help to set goals and try new opportunities in FFA. And I just wanted to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to go on this trip. It was really beneficial to all of our six members who went, and I've only ever heard good things from those people about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. It's obvious that you have leadership skills, so well done. At this time, we will now continue on with our items number 400, our informational reports. At this time, we have item number 401, our Board Visit Report to the Linmar High School. That happened on October 30th. Anyone like to speak to that?
I can go. It was a very informational visit. I was taken by two of the science teachers, and luckily, both of them taught my daughter. So it was kind of fun. But I went to a chemistry class and a math class and an English class, sorry, it's been a little bit. But what was interesting to see was how the students came and they were engaged. First thing, we were there first thing in the morning when the school started, and even if the students were coming late, they would just let the teacher know they're there, and the next thing I know, all the seats turned and they were interacting and working. I saw that with the English class. I saw that with, for the math class was also interesting. There was, I'm missing the thing that Dr. Gustafson showed us, like the things they're focusing on, and every classroom had those priorities on a wall, on a door somewhere, and the teachers were consciously aware of the way they were teaching about it. It was a really cool visit. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we together just want to affirm it was a very meaningful visit, and I think that it was very inspiring as well. Anyone else like to speak to that?
I just want to, again, anytime we get to visit the high school, when you're not in the high school every day, it's really easy to look at the building on 10th Street and think, that's really big and there's just a lot going on. And that's true, there's a lot going on, but I'm always impressed with just how well-run it is and how the students all know where they're going. But what I want to comment on, the classes I visited were great, but as I was coming back from the second class back to our meeting spot in the office, I got to walk through kind of the student areas where they can congregate and study together between classes, except that it wasn't between classes, it was before school. So they were either there for blended learning, or they came into school before to work together and just, it was very, they were all working, they weren't really supervised in the, in like, I mean, there were supervisors, but it was just independent learning in the hallways and in those study areas. And I'm just always impressed with how well the high school functions with so many students in the building. So it doesn't feel like, except for four corners of passing time, it doesn't feel that big when you're in certain sections of the high school. So just kudos once again to the staff at the high school because they're doing a great job.
Thank you. Laura?
I just also wanted to add that I appreciated the structure. You know, when we walked in there, Dr. G was like, okay, like, you have one person that's going to take you to at least two different places. Look for this, you know, we have clear expectations. And so I want to clarify that, like, when we go to the elementaries, we gush about like, oh, the kids, and they're cute, and they read and they dance. But each of these visits actually has like so much structure and like good content, and that definitely was the same with the high schools. So I always appreciate, you know, them laying out that purpose for the visit. And then also, just like Britt said, it is a large building, but it was clear that the communication structure amongst the entire building was very robust, and I just really appreciated the staff for the ability to kind of stay in touch no matter where they were in the building.
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. The, first of all, they took me to a French class, and I'm still trying to figure that out because I have never taken French in my life. But anyway, it was a very good visit. The main point that I want to make is the structure of our high school and the organization of our high school, because Jeff has made a comment on numerous occasions, the 2,400 children we have in there or more is like a small, little city. So when you see the cars coming and going, the buses, and everybody coming and going throughout the whole day, there's a number of students in there that are learning and they're studying, but to keep that all organized, to me, is absolutely amazing, so.
Thank you for your comments. Again, thank you to the high school for hosting us. We're now going to move on to item number 402, our Marion City Council report. Barry, you're up again.
There is absolutely no new information for Linmar School District.
Thank you for that.
There you go.
There you go for that report. Item number 403, our Finance Audit Committee Report.
Okay, so I'll just make some comments on that brief, because most of the stuff we discussed will be voted on later on in the meeting. You know, the first thing we do at the meeting is, is we go through all the bills, believe it or not, we have a stack of paper there, and that's really kind of one of the most important parts of our, of what we do. We discussed early separation, and just one little comment on that, and we'll be voting on that later on as well, that when we did do early separation, there's always two payments that go out. They get one right away, the retirees, and then the second one comes a year later. Well, we've made the second payment, so we're completely clean now and we're flush, so that's the good news, so we have a clean slate there. We'll be talking about budget projections going forward with the consideration of SSA and the enrollment, and we did have good news on that. We talked about roofing, we talked about facility assessments and all that kind of stuff, and all of those are ongoing, but the roofing project will be, once again, moving forward. We talked about bid letting for three new buses, and I think we'll get into that a little bit deeper. Another positive note, going through the pandemic, going through all of that, we were always about two or three years behind getting buses that we had ordered, and once again, we're all caught up on that level. You don't, that hasn't changed, right? Okay, so we're all caught up. So that's a good thing, because we were ordering buses and still hadn't got two years ago buses. So those are all good news, so that thing is all flushed out. So with all of that said, like I said, we're going to vote on three different items in the agenda later on, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else on the committee have anything to add? If not, any questions? All right. Thank you very much for your report. We're going to move on now to item number 404, our Venture Academics Advisory Report.
Yeah, so I was able to attend the advisory meeting last week, and these advisory meetings are always broken into kind of an introduction. We all learned what everyone's favorite Thanksgiving side was, and then they spotlight the projects the students are working on. So this time, we got to hear from the Creative Writing Student Strand. They worked with the Chamber on the Marion Spooktacular Project, where they learned about Marion history, and were each assigned a restaurant, and based on the history of the building the restaurant is in in Uptown, they wrote a ghost story. And then the restaurants all decorated in the theme of the ghost story that the kids wrote, and the kids got to kind of dictate that, and then they appeared, the stories were on the backs of the menus for this event. And so they got to engage with all of the business owners and learn about the history of things, and then, of course, the creative writing aspect. So that was a really cool thing to get to hear about from the students. The other one, so if you're looking for a really fun local holiday gift for someone, the Marketing Strand partnered again with one of the local coffee shops in Uptown and the Chamber to, they were looking for a Marion coffee blend, and so they were going to just pick one, but they ended up going with all of the designs that the different groups of students picked. So there is a holiday spotlight, Marion Holiday Coffee, and the kids designed, they talked us through how, the brainstorming, and it's all around the new ice skating rink and Uptown and the tree, and so it's very cool. The coffee bags are all branded in these new themes, and then the Venture logo is up there right with the Marion logo. So just hearing the kids talk about how they go through these unique projects and all the different ways that they're learning, because they're getting core credit, they're all getting communication and speech and rhetoric credit, but then they're getting the marketing credit or the creative writing credit or things like that, and to just hear them talk about their projects and the processes that they're going through, these are things that as a marketing person, I didn't start doing until college, and they're doing this sometimes as freshmen. So hearing about the projects was really great. And then we always take a moment, and the whole advisory group, it's made up of community members, students, teachers, we brainstorm future projects, and so we're all divided into groups, and we have a white sheet at each, and we brainstorm what's going on in our worlds and how might that, is there something that we can think of that the students might help us with in the future? We don't share that, it just all goes back, but from my group, I was paired in a group with Ryan Waller from City of Marion, and his idea, and I just happened to be in his group, so it was fortuitous, his idea was to have the kids from the law and civic strand help the city, talk to citizens about how property taxes actually work and what funds what, and then he just looked over at me and he goes, you have this too. And so then, right next to city, he wrote LM, and so the proposed project is for a joint city-school district, this is how property taxes work. From a student's perspective, how would we communicate that? It might be social media, news, I don't know, whatever the kids come up with, but that was a project that was floated, so we'll see if that goes anywhere. But I definitely said that John was available to answer questions as the students learn about property taxes. So, again, venture is a really cool way for students to learn in a non-traditional format, and I always love hearing from the students about the projects that they've come up with. So happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No, thank you, but thank you for your report. At this time, we're moving on to item number 405, our Canvas of Votes. John, this is all you.
Yeah, so we received the abstract of votes from the County Board of Canvassers, and so they certify the following to be a true and correct abstract of the votes cast in this county at the 2025 City School Election held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. The tally list returned from the several, as shown by the tally list returned from several election precincts. So for Linmar School Director-at-Large, Midhat Mansour received 3,185 votes. Evan Langston received 3,389 votes. Laura Thomas received 3,427 votes. Michael Bowling received 2,120 votes. There was a scattering of 239 votes for a total of 12,360 votes. So therefore, they declare Midhat Mansour to be duly elected for the Office of Linmar School Director-at-Large, Evan Langston to be duly elected for the Office of Linmar School Director-at-Large, and Laura Thomas to be duly elected for the Office of Linmar School District Director-at-Large.
Thank you for your report. At this time, we'll move on to item number 406, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, President LaLa Lancaster. Just a few district honors and highlights. We have a student highlight to kick off tonight. Congratulations to Ally Finch for being featured as the student highlight on the district website. Ally is a freshman and part of the Linmar Marching Lions. Some all-state music honors, congrats to the 88 Linmar High School musicians that auditioned for a chance to perform at the 2025 All-State Music Festival. In total, 55 students were elected to perform. Congratulations also to the Linmar High School Bella Voice Choir and Director Jack Jorgensen for being selected to perform at the 2026 Midwestern Region American Choral Association Director Association Conference in Milwaukee on February 27th. Congrats goes out to our team at Echo Hill and Indian Creek Elementary Schools for being recognized as Project Adam HeartSafe Schools. Project Adam is a national initiative that helps schools prepare for cardiac emergencies through education planning and hands-on drills. Also, last week, we had our Athletics Fall Letter of Intent signing, where seven of our student athletes were recognized. Another fine arts honor with our Linmar Orchestra. We are proud to announce that 11 of our talented orchestra students have been selected to participate in the 2025 Iowa Junior All-State Orchestra, which takes place this coming Friday in Ames. Today, many of us were at Wilkins to celebrate and have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for their playground. Again, that was in partnership with the City of Marion, so it was nice to partner with them for that ceremony today and recognize and thank everybody that was involved in that project. Some updates on some other projects with our performance venue getting closer and closer here, casework installation in the auditorium lobby and auditorium is ongoing, installing plantings and seeding, cleaning up final grading, they're finishing up installing doors and hardware throughout, stage floor base has been installed, auditorium seat installation, installing remaining ceiling tiles, cleaning and sealing concrete floors, installing window films, painting stair walls, electrician is installing the final wiring connections, and there's cleaning ongoing everywhere. As far as our indoor activity center and renovation project, we have had several steering committee meetings now since the end of September, and we are ready to bring out some of that work to our stakeholder group that we'd been working with for the last couple of years, and we'll do that on December 1st. We'll be letting them know that tomorrow in invitation to come to that meeting on the night of December 1st, and then we'll update all of you at our regular board meeting on December 8th. We are with that group incorporating decisions and new information. TerraCon has been working on geotechnical items, mechanical instructional system development is underway, locker room layouts are being developed, fitness and weight room layouts also are being updated. The weight room layout has been updated, and we've been looking at several different layout options for where the athletic office is going to be. So we're excited to bring that all to you at the next board meeting. Some upcoming events for our students and staff, the high school has conferences this Thursday, and then next week, we roll right into Teacher Comp Day on Wednesday, the 26th, Thanksgiving break on the 27th and 28th, and then December will be here before we know it.
Thank you for your report. Does anyone have any questions? If not, we're going to move on to item number 500, our series Unfinished Business. I am looking for a motion for item number 501, the second reading of policy recommendations.
Motion to approve the second reading of policies 104.1, 104.2, 104.3, and 202.1 as presented in exhibit 501.1.
Second.
We have a motion by Melissa and a second by Laura. Is there any discussion? If no discussion, may I have all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And the motion has carried. We are now under items number 600, New Business. Item number 601, Approval of Open Enrollment Requests. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the open enrollment request as presented?
Second.
We have a motion by Melissa and a second by Midhat. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And the motion has carried. Item number 602, the letting of bus bids. May I have a bid, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the letting of bus bids for purchase of three replacement buses for a total cost not to exceed $500,000 with the expense to be funded by Tepol dollars.
I have a motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. We have a motion by Barry, a second by Melissa. Is there any discussion?
So this is just part of the ongoing continual replacement of the fleet of buses that we have with this letting. We're going to get bids back that will help inform if the buses will be gas, diesel, or propane. We found that we get better fuel savings with the propane buses, however, the maintenance on the actual bus is harder, so the Transportation Department, every time, takes away and, you know, really tries to take a balanced approach, because they might save on the fuel, but spend more on the maintenance of the bus. So we're waiting to understand as the preferred manufacturer of buses that has the lower maintenance costs, does not have propane options yet, but we do expect them to be introducing propane options here in the very near future, so that will help with us having more consistent gas prices or fuel prices moving forward.
I just have a quick follow-up question about, you said the maintenance is harder, and I know we have an awesome crew of like bus maintenance folks, but I also assume, I want to make sure they have everything they need to do their jobs as well as I know they can do them, so I'm just glad that we are listening to them and collaborating with the Bus Barn folks. I know they're like, I know where they are and I know they're over there, but like, I want to acknowledge that that is a key part, and I appreciate their work and the maintenance they do on these things, so I'm glad we're like being mindful of choosing something based on how it affects our staff and their day-to-day jobs.
Thank you for that.
Does the type of bus, does cold weather impact one type of bus over the other, and is that a factor in the decision?
Not that we've heard from the Transportation Department, no. It's more about just the general frame of the one brand of bus is easier to work on and has better responsiveness in service. and has better responsiveness in service, their staff, than the other brand, so.
Okay.
Thanks. See, they also do a good job of balancing propane, diesel, and gas so that the fleet is balanced. So if one of those fuel sources skyrockets, it's not the entire fleet and vice versa. So, that's also another factor that is considered.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And the motion has carried. We now have item number 603, Early Separation Discussion. At this time, I'm just gonna facilitate a conversation about early separation, and I'm gonna ask John to speak to it first.
Yeah, I can speak or finance audit committee members, if one of you guys want to speak, up to you.
Okay, John, you start us off.
All right. So, early separation discussion, so this is something we look at this time of year to see if we need to offer a package. Remember, we use this as a budget control device if we need to offer these packages. And after doing our forecasting for our budget, we don't believe this year that it's, that this is a necessary step that we need to take in order to balance our budget. So, having that conversation with our finance audit committee members, we don't believe we needed to do this this year.
I think that's, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that in our discussions, I support John's recommendation to not offer it this year. We've offered it for two years in a row, as was stated earlier by Barry. That final payment for the second iteration has been paid off, and we have a, we're now done with that. And it's nice, historically, it's kind of, it was in every other year, and then we did it two years in a row. I support not doing it because we don't need it this year, but we might need it next year. And so to just do it to do it doesn't seem like a good thing for, like, from my perspective. It is a budget control. We don't need to use it this year, so I'd rather keep it on the back burner in case we need to use it next year.
With all of that, Justin's got a comment, or are you ready to vote?
I was just gonna add, so for the rest of the board here, the, when we do enact it, it's, the costs are paid through the management levy, which is one of the mini levies that we set every year. So, by not adding more to that, you know, we're able to, you know, balance that, that budget in that line item a little bit better, so.
I, I did have a question for, I don't know who. It might be John, it might be Carla. Hi. In regards to kind of staff morale and expectations.
So I'm gonna put a pause on that right now.
Okay.
Because right now, it's informational, and we're gonna have a motion, a second, and then discussion. That probably is a better conversation about discussion.
I, I kinda think that that's a question, the motion's going to be to approve or deny, and if that influences.
Good point.
Just my thought, like.
Yes, I just wanna get, I don't wanna over stump our discussion section of our conversation.
It will not affect my vote.
Okay, go.
Okay. Just, I, companies, staff, teams appreciate predictability, consistency, and so I, I guess I wanted to check in on the temperature of the staff and their, you know, is, have we built an expectation around this, or, you know, how it's viewed, I guess, for lack of a better words. Like, are we setting, is, is there a precedent? Excuse me. I think you know what I'm getting at. I will stop rambling. Sorry.
I'll make a comment to that, and if Carla wants to add to it.
Yeah, sure.
Something that we've discussed quite often in the past, it is not mandatory for us to offer early retirement. The second item is, for a while, we were doing it every other year, and that got to be a little bit of a precedence, but that was not really a pattern either. So we, we basically have that option here at the table, whatever it is, and we want to be sensitive. We understand that, but it is not mandatory that we offer early separation. I don't know, is that?
Right, I agree. I think, actually, long, long ago, it was offered every year, and then we were only getting one or two people, and then we did every other year. But in the recent, I don't know, Barry, five, six years, it's just been whenever we needed to use it as a budgetary tool.
Right.
So, that's kind of where, I haven't heard one way or the other from any staff, so I'm not much help.
The reason it gets brought to the board is we have a policy on early separation that just says the board has to discuss and decide.
Sure.
If we're offering it or not, but in my entire time on the board, it has been more of the budgetary tool and not a staff benefit.
Sure.
If you will.
And that makes sense, and I follow that logic, and I appreciate the comments. My, my brain and the consistency-loving, and so I just wanted to add some logic to the pacing of it and why we do it or don't do it. So thank you for indulging me, President LaLancester.
Sure thing.
So, this is all good discussion, so I'm ready to make a motion to deny offering early separation as discussed.
Second. We have a motion to deny offering of early separation as discussed by Barry, a second by Britt. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And the motion has carried. We're now going to move on to item number 700, our consent agenda. I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion for the consent agenda by Midhat and a second by Laura. Is there any discussion?
I would like to call out, just in the, in the co-extracurricular staff assignments, reassignments, and transfers, that there's one position that's listed almost identically, but not for boys and for girls, and that you'll see a different price or revenue on those, right? So, I asked earlier, and one of the big drivers for the difference on that is just that it's not the same job. So it's not about being boys or girls, it's not the same job, and that there is more tasks assigned with the top one. But I guess, Amy, I would ask if there's anything that I missed in that.
I'm looking for my notes as well. Nathan was the one that actually clarified this this morning. Nathan, do you want to share?
Yeah, so both of these come out of the individual funds that they raise for basketball. When I talk to our 80s today, it's between the coaches, so it's between the boys and girls head basketball coaches to determine how they want this split up, and the boys have announcers for the sophomore and varsity game, the girls only have an announcer for the varsity games, and then the boys' basketball team pays for the announcers, which is this person that's got the two contracts listed for all of their double headers. So it's just the way they're using their money in their funds accounts, which is why those, those numbers are different.
Thank you for that clarity, as I was sharing. It may be just useful in the future for just even one word differential, because we would not have known that information. I thank you for doing your research today and all of the follow-up. Go ahead.
The other thing I would add, is we had a discussion today about, these positions are not Schedule H positions as part of our teacher contract, and so I think some of that is grouped together, and it might make it confusing for the board and for the public. So we talked about splitting that apart in the future, so you'd understand what is Schedule H payment, because those would be very similar versus the opportunity that Nathan shared today.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. If all are in favor, please say yes. If you're in favor of passing the consent agenda.
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And the motion has carried. All right. We are all the way to items number 800 in our board calendar and communications. I'd like to highlight the following upcoming events. 19 through the 21st, this week, we will be in Des Moines. It is an exciting week to be not only together but with the, with all of the boards throughout the state, and then we will also be with the urban boards, the larger school district boards for our annual dinner. Just highlighting also, there's no school on November 26th through the 28th, that is our Thanksgiving break. CTE Committee meets December 3rd. We have a finance audit committee meeting December 4th. The 4th and the 18th, we have Marion City Council. I need to request some volunteers to go to that or to at least listen. And December 8th, we will be back together for our board meeting and a work session as well, so make sure you'd under, remember that that's both and. At this time, do I have anyone who would take on the two city council board, city council meetings, the 4th and the 18th?
I can do the 4th.
I can do the other one.
All right, we have Britt on the 4th. Thank you. And we have Laura on the 18th. Awesome.
You're gonna have to drive a long ways for those.
Yeah.
Yes, I saw they were having their turn in our.
We should, also, part of the consent agenda, we will now be hosting the Marion City Council as they hosted us while we had some renovations to our property. We are now hosting them. So, we kinda giggle because we used, I used to leave notes and little things for the person who I was taking their seat from, and so now I get to do it again. So, it helps when it's your former teacher. So, there you go. We are moving now on to our item number 900.
Well, I have the great honor tonight to thank Director Walker for her four years of service to the board. I didn't try to tally up how many hours Melissa has spent over the last four years, but I did do a little bit of homework on what kind of committees that she has spent her time on. So beyond the normal one-to-two board meetings, work sessions, board visits, all the things, Melissa also spent time in six different committees over those four years. So, Policy Committee, and gosh, we spent a lot of hours in Policy Committee in this past year. Venture, Academics Advisory, Lynnmar High School Counselors Advisory, CTE Advisory, the School Improvement Committee, as well as being a legislative liaison. So, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for all of your time that you volunteered to the district. Barry, did you want to say something?
[inaudible]
And, how can I forget? The Vice President, when Barry was president. So, Melissa, thank you so much for your service to the district, to our community, to our kids, to our staff, to our students. So, thank you so much.
I really appreciate that. It has been an interesting four years, and I don't think I really knew what I was getting myself into. So Evan, good luck. I've warmed the seat up for you, and hopefully it is a calmer next four years for you. My encouragement to the rest of you is, as I was feeling really sad last night about stepping down and, and being done with this time, my encouragement to, to those of you is to not let the really hard days overshadow all the great, amazing stuff that this board gets to allow to happen for our kids and families. Looking back over these past four years, we have had the opportunity to open buildings of every type, from tennis courts to this amazing building, and renovating almost every other building in this district. We have repaired buildings from derecho, we have helped kids get the masks off, we have recovered from book bans, back on the shelves and off the shelves and on the shelves and back off the shelves again, and all of the things that we just never would have imagined. And I think what I'm most proud of for us as a team is that we never lost sight of what's most important, which is protecting our kids and making sure that they have what they need to succeed. And it has been my utmost honor, and I'm so glad that I was, I really feel like I was here, the right place at the right time, and very proud to have this opportunity.
Thank you very much. At this time, I need item number 1,000, a motion for adjournment, please.
Move to adjourn. You want to do it?
Move to adjourn at 5:37.
5:37.
Second.
We have a motion by Melissa and a second by, I believe, Laura. All those, is there any discussion?
I just want to thank Laura as well. Yes, thank you.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
The motion, oh, any opposed? The motion has carried. We're now gonna take about a 10-minute break for an adjournment. In between our meetings, we'll have our organizational meeting in about 10 minutes. meeting in about 10 minutes. All right. On behalf of the board, I welcome everyone to our organizational meeting of the Linmar Community School District Board of Directors, and I will call the meeting to order at, somebody, somebody, somebody?
5:50.
5:50. Thank you very much. All right. John, will you now determine a quorum, please?
Director Buckholz?
Yes.
Director Foss?
Yes.
Director Langston?
Yes.
Director Mansour?
Yes.
Director Maury?
Yes.
Director Thomas?
Yes.
President Lau Lancaster?
Yes. Thank you very much. We have determined a quorum. Item number 200, adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Midhot and a second by Laura. Is there any discussion? No? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion has carried. At this time, I now relinquish the chair to
John as the Board Secretary and Treasurer, who will now administer the oath of office to our newly-elected board member and facilitate the election of Board President.
Okay, Evan, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of your elected office in the Linmar Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Did you get all the photos that you need? Got it. All right. Welcome, welcome, welcome. All right, we now have, I believe, yep, still John. It's you, 302.
Still me, huh?
Still you.
All right. So, facilitating the election of the Board President, I will ask for nominations for a one-year term beginning immediately.
I would like to nominate Katie Lau Lancaster for President.
Second.
They don't need, they don't need, so, it'll be, I'll ask for nominations. Whoever was nominated has to accept the nomination. We don't need second. So, Britt has nominated Katie. Katie, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Do we have any other nominations? Okay, I will close the nominations. Now, I believe I need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve Katie Lau Lancaster as President for the 2025-26 school year.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote. Director Buckholz?
Yes.
Director Foss?
Yes.
Director Langston?
Yes.
Director Lau Lancaster?
Yes.
Director Mansour?
Yes.
Director Maury?
Yes.
Director Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will do the oath of office for President. Congratulations, Katie.
Thank you.
Part of the sea again.
Yeah. Nope, there you go.
All right, let's make sure we read the right one here. Katie, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of President of the Linmar Community School District Board of Directors as now and hereafter required by law?
Yes, I do.
Congratulations.
Yay! All right. Thank you very much for that encouragement. I just lost my glasses, though. Oh, where'd you put them down? Does anybody see a white pair of glasses? In my back pocket. There you go. All right, let's do this. All right. We're moving on now to item number 303, election of Board Vice President, and we will follow by administrative vote. At this time, I am calling for nominees, please.
A nominee, Brittany Maury.
I nominate myself, Justin Foss.
I'll nominate myself as well.
Any further nominations? At this time, we have three nominations. Britt, Justin, and Barry. Are there any others? All right. At this time, each nominee may have, make a statement, up to three minutes, in support of their candidacy. Just because this is the way that they came through, let's go through alphabetically. Barry, you got the B and the A. Let's go.
Well, and something, this is just, you know, I've been in a leadership role a number of times, and I just feel like it takes a couple of years of a leadership group to really get their feet on the ground. And, I feel I'm very happy that Katie is now going to be the President again, and I think it would be, it would be very important if I could follow with her, if that's such a thing. And, I feel like my leadership skills over the years have accomplished quite a bit. So, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Britt, you'll be next.
Thank you for nominating me, Laura. So, I did serve as President for two years, so leadership on the board and in other areas does exist, but I think my focus would be, I agree, consistent leadership. Katie's found her feet. I'm excited to see her second year, and I just think that I would be able to offer some support based on my history on the board and my past leadership experience as well.
Thank you very much. Justin?
I think our leadership duo has done well here in the last year. And, with that being said, as we think about succession planning for the future, if, if we have two years, and two years, and two years, it makes it really hard for all the positions underneath just to continue to grow and move forward as we think about the long term. So, I love what Barry's been doing. I love what Katie's been doing. And, as I think about just succession planning to move into the future, I wanted to introduce the concept of allowing growth and having more succession planning.
Thank you, Justin, for your comments. At this time, John will be handing out a piece of paper to each person. Wait until I give all the directions, please. Each member will write your own name on the ballot. Each member then-
Katie, can I interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
So, other board members also have a chance to make a statement in support.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I apologize. Is there anyone who would like to make a statement in the positives supporting any of the candidates? Thank you, John.
I'll, I'll speak quick because I can appreciate everyone's, and honestly, it's, it's so, so much, we've really all found our footing as a board, and working together and communicating. And, so I guess to add some context, that I think working together, my nominee, Director Maury, could continue to work with Katie, Director Lau Lancaster, to, to continue to move us in that same direction. And, I'm with you on the succession piece, and I think that is still, I think we still have that in the long sights. And, I guess that will wrap up my rambling for this comment.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a statement of support for any of the three candidates?
I appreciate all three of you putting yourself out there. I really do. I appreciate the leadership skills that all three of you bring. Britt has a lot of knowledge. Barry has a lot of tenure, and Justin is the new blood. I just want to give a shout out to support all three of you. It, I feel like anybody who gets elected to this position will bring great leadership.
Thank you for your comments. Thanks, John, for catching that. I appreciate it. We are now going to listen to the directions. Are you ready? John's going to hand out a piece of paper, ballot. You will write your own name on the ballot. Then, you will write the name of the nominee whom you are voting for. At that time, then, those ballots will be collected. At that, following that, the pro temp will read off all, each board member's name and their vote out loud in open session. The votes will be tallied. At that time, the pro temp will ask for a motion for the person receiving the most votes. If that person receives a second, the pro temp will call for a roll call vote. We'll stop right there until we need to go any further.
All right, I'm going to read these in no particular order. Director Thomas, vote for Director Maury. Director Maury, vote for Director Maury. Director Langston, a vote for Director Foss. Director Foss, a vote for Director Foss. Director Mansour, vote for Director Foss. Director Buckholz, vote for Director Buckholz. President Lau Lancaster, a vote for Director Maury. So, our totals are three for Director Maury, three for Director Foss, one for Director Buckholz.
So, at this time, we have a tie. This is now, this process that we had just gone through will continue until a Vice President is elected by majority of vote.
Katie, do you want to clarify what those steps are when you-
Let's do this again. So, we will now have our two candidates that received the most votes were Foss, just for the record, Foss, and Britt, sorry, Maury. And then, now we will have statements in- And then now we will have statements in favor of Foss and Maury. They get to speak first to themselves. And this time, we'll go in reverse alphabetical order. Justin?
I've really tried to be an impartial advocate for all of our students to really see both sides of the aisle and make sure that the decisions we make are sound in logic and judgment, and think about how it helps all students. I would like to continue to grow in my experience and advocacy here for students and for the district and for the taxpayers, for the financial health of the district, which we've made considerable improvement for. There you go.
Thank you. Britt?
I had no idea. I was going to have to speak about myself so much. Not prepared. So serving on this board is such an honor in any capacity. So whether I become VP or not, just this work is important. My philosophy since day one has been to listen, to share what we hear from stakeholders, to advocate for everyone in our district, and to collaborate with everyone on this board. I've enjoyed working with each one of you on this board. Evan and I look forward to that same relationship now that you've joined us. So I think in this role, I think it's important to have those connections, to have that understanding of the different perspectives that are coming in, to be able to listen and acknowledge, and then to collaborate well with the president of the board. It's a team. I know that from my own experience, that those two positions, working with the superintendent, it's a unique relationship. And I would, it would be, I would be grateful for that opportunity to be able to support Katie in her second year and to continue to utilize the skills that I've gained over the last six years to further the goals of this board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, anyone who would like to speak in support of a candidate, please just go ahead and let me know. Barry?
Yeah, I think after listening to the two of them talk, you know, I've been very fortunate that I've actually worked with three different superintendents over my 20-plus years. And I was talked about this last year in great detail, and I'll talk about it again tonight. I really think succession planning is real critical, and I really feel, when Justin made that comment, it was at the point where I was willing to pull my name off for that reason, because I do think as we move forward, Katie and myself have talked a lot today, this week, about tenure on the board and having new people on committees and four-year people and all of that. So we really think we need to get more and more people trained at different levels, and I really think Justin would fit that role quite well from a succession planning. So that's just my thought.
Just a quick clar- we talked about two years and four years left on this board currently, and we were just seeing how we can continue to have that kind of relationship, but also lifting up one another's skill set. And so just reminding ourselves, not everything has to go like this, but leaning into our skill set as well. So thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of either candidate? Having seen none, at this time, I'll ask John to go ahead and hand out a ballot. You will once again be asked to put your name on the ballot, as well as the person that you are voting for, and then he will collect those ballots, and your name and your vote will be read out loud for open session.
All right. Again, in no particular order, Director Maury for Director Maury. Director Buckholz for Director Foss. Director Thomas for Director Maury. Director Langston for Director Foss. President Lael Lancaster for Director Maury. Director Mansour for Director Foss. And Director Foss for Director Foss. So that's four votes, Director Foss, three votes, Director Maury.
Thank you very much. That means that we do have a majority at this time for Director Foss. I would need a motion to continue on.
I make a motion to approve Director Justin Foss as vice president for the 25-26 school year.
Second. I have a motion by Barry, a second by Midhat. Is there any further discussion? If not, may I have all those in voting, please?
It's a roll call.
We just did. Thank you. It's a roll call vote.
Roll call. Yep. Director Foss?
Yes.
Director Langston?
Yes.
Director Mansour?
Yes.
Director Maury?
Yes.
Director Thomas?
Yes.
Director Buckholz?
Yes.
President Lael Lancaster?
Yes. I now declare that Justin Foss is our new vice president for a one-year term, and now I will administer the vote, so may you part the ways. Oath of office. Sorry, moving it out of the way. All right. Ready to do this? All right, Justin. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of Vice President of the Lenmark Community School District Board of Directors as now and hereafter required by law? If so, yes, say yes. I solemnly swear.
Yes, I solemnly swear.
That's a woo-hoo now, right? Woo-hoo! All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we will continue on with item number 304, the appointment of our board legal counsel. I need a motion, please.
Make a motion to appoint the law firm of Pickens, Barnes &amp; Abernathy for general counsel, Terry Abernathy as attorney, Simons, Perrin, Moyer, and Bergman for real estate and copyright matters, and the Allers &amp; Cooney for general counsel, special education, personnel negotiations, construction, real estate, and bonding matters for the 2025-26 fiscal year.
Second.
A Britt by motion, a motion by Britt, and a second by Barry. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And the motion is carried. Item number 305, designation of depository banks.
I make a motion to designate Farmer State Bank with an authorized limit of $30 million, Hills Bank with an authorized limit of $30 million, Central State Bank with an authorized limit of $5 million, and Iowa School Joint Investment Trust with an authorized limit of $20 million as depositaries of the district for the 2025-26 school year.
Seconded.
I have a motion by Barry and a second by Evan. Congratulations, Evan. All right. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And the motion is carried. Item number 306, designation of general circulation newspaper.
Motion to approve the Cedar Rapids Gazette as the district's designated newspaper of general circulation for the 2025-26 fiscal year.
Second.
We have a second, a motion by Midhat and a second by Laura. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And the motion is carried. Item number 307, approval of the 2025-26 board meeting dates. I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve the 2025-26 board meeting dates as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Laura and a second by Britt. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And the motion is carried. At this time, we will designate representatives to serve on the various committees and advisories for the 2025 fiscal, 2025-2026 fiscal year. You have lists in the agenda, and I'm going to get my list as well. I will begin. Hang on, pause. This is what I want. Thank you very much. There is trees everywhere here. All right, we are going to go ahead, and we had the opportunity to just kind of dig deeper into these. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to also read the job descriptions, including how often they meet, and on your attendance is an expectation of each one of those positions. These are not in order of importance, but instead, they are the committees and advisory councils that are actually determined by law and also by the work of this board. We are going to start off with a finance audit committee and advisory. May I have those who are interested? And we are going to go alphabetical, please. Barry, are you interested?
Yes.
All right. Britt?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Oh, Evan, sorry, Evan. There's an E in there.
No.
Thank you. Justin, yes?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
Midhat?
Yes.
All right. We have four board members interested in, and I'm a no. We have four board members interested in finance audit for a position that can only take three individuals. I'm just encouraging us, I'm going to have a dialogue about this. Barry has two years, Britt has two years, Justin has two years, and Midhat has four. We were talking about succession and about having opportunity for people to serve on multiple areas. I'd like the board, those who have put their nomination in, to please make that consideration and to see if anyone would be willing to move to another committee. We're going to pause.
I will move to policy committee, or, sorry, let me rephrase that. I will remove myself from the committee.
Okay. Thank you for your collaborative work there, Justin. That means that now we have Barry, Britt, and Midhat all interested in finance audit. All right. Everybody okay about that? We'll move on to the next one. Hey, policy, Laura and myself are excited, and who do we get to welcome with us, please? Barry?
Nope.
Britt?
Only if absolutely needed.
Okay, so Britt's out here. All right. Evan?
Yes.
All right. Justin?
No.
Laura? Oh, you're already there. Sorry.
Yes, still yes.
Yes, still yes.
Twice.
And Midhat?
No.
No. That means that we now have Laura, Katie, Evan, and Britt. I'm going to let that pause for a moment.
No, you just take me right off.
All right.
I was only filling the third seat if absolutely necessary.
Thank you very much. You're very gracious.
I've spent my time on policy. It's a great committee, and I'm glad there are three other people who want to do it.
That actually means that both these boards, or both of these committees now have representation for both voting cycles, election cycles, excuse me. Policy then would be Laura, Katie, and Evan. Good? I'm going to move on to what's commonly known as CTE, and that's career and technical education. Currently, I have, I'm going to go down the line again. Barry?
No.
And Britt?
If the third spot needs filled, but I'd rather someone else get the opportunity to experience it.
Okay. Just a second. I'm putting you over here. Evan?
Yes.
You're already there. Thank you, Evan. Okay, Evan, you're just trying. Justin? CTE?
I'll join in again. It's been a little while.
Okay. No pressure from your colleague over there. Okay. Justin, Laura?
No.
Okay. Midhat?
Yes.
Yes. And that's the end of it, right?
You can remove me.
Remove Britt. That means we have then for career and technical education, CTE, we would have Evan, Justin, and Midhat. I'm going to move on then to school improvement advisory committee, also known as CYAC. And yes, Nathan, it's my favorite meetings of the year. So there, you can just think I'm odd, but that's my favorite meeting of the entire year, but did you see I'm willing to share that joy? And I mean that with sincerity, and these guys think I'm nuts, but that's the meeting that you actually get to the meat and potatoes of what we do here for the students. So I appreciate it. At that, saying that, we have Justin. I'm going to start off, sorry. Barry?
No.
Is a no? Britt?
No.
Evan?
Yes.
Right, I'm here. Evan, and then we have Laura?
No, thanks. Saying no just felt so hard. No, I don't want to.
Katie will only if we need to. Okay, and then Britt? I already asked you that, didn't I? All right. Anybody did I leave off? Oh, Midhat?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
All right. We now have four folks, Justin, Midhat, Evan, and Katie. Katie will take herself out. That would leave Justin, Midhat, and Evan. Any other discussion?
It's my favorite, but if somebody wants it more than me, they can have it.
Oh, CYAC?
Yeah. Did you put, because there were four people, right?
We've already moved on, baby.
They're already written.
You're on in.
Okay, that's perfect.
In pen.
Okay, perfect.
In pen, it's in pen. All right.
Thank you, Katie.
We now are on to facilities advisory. I'm going to go down the line again. Barry?
Yes.
Britt?
Yes.
Evan?
No.
Hang on. Justin?
Yes.
Hang on. Laura?
Yes, please. Manners never hurt no one.
I meant to put Katie on there as well. Katie then L, see, I can, Katie then L, and then Midhat.
No.
Okay. We have at this time Barry, Laura, Britt, Katie, and Justin on this team. At this time, I'm going to speak. I have been on policy now for a while, and I enjoy it, but I also would like to be part of what's going forward with our facilities advisory. I'm looking at this list right now. Barry has two more years, Laura has four, Britt has two, Katie has two, Justin has two. So letting you know, we are very heavy on, if we're looking for the future of where we are going, just that team is-
Take me out.
Okay. Barry is out. That still leaves us Laura, Britt, Katie, and Justin. And we have you there. Britt, we have you as finance audit. Would you be willing to serve in that capacity? And then it looks like we almost have everybody on a, on one of those opportunities.
Because you've got four on there.
We have four. We have Laura, Britt, Katie, and Justin.
So you're asking me to step down?
I'm asking you to consider it. I'm not asking, I'm just asking you to consider it. And if not, it's Justin, it's, because if Laura stays on, that's four, Britt's two, Katie's two, and Justin's two. So just throwing that out there.
The only reason I hesitate is because I'd like to finish what I've started.
You started.
I'm a completionist, as my husband would call me, so, but I'll consider it if-
I would say the reason for that is that neither Justin and I are on finance audit. I am grateful that you are. I see that that would keep facilities, is not a financial, it is a future thinking of how we maintain our facilities. It does get into some finances, but that's not the goal of that team. I would like to be a part of that, to just see that through as well. So I still have Laura, Britt, myself, and Justin. Laura being four, Britt and Katie and Justin, too. I have, would like some finance background, or not finance, but other than policy. I love policy, you guys, but I would be nice to have something other than policy.
Just for the rest of the board, when we were, when I was thinking about this before, what we found is unfortunately a huge overlap, or a perceived overlap, of what's talked about at finance, and then how that interplays directly with facilities. And so it's, in fact, there was, I'd even thought about it in my head of, do we even need a facilities committee? Because as it was born, because we weren't having enough perceived discussions about the physical buildings that we have, and we've got a lot of buildings now, and so it made sense to have a group of the board to, I want to say, provide oversight to that, because it's just an advisory committee, but to be thinking about that, to be kind of tasked with that. And so as we were thinking about it, even this last week here, we were like, whereas we're, as the finance committee was walking through it, we're like, was, is this a facilities discussion, or is this a finance discussion? Is this a facilities discussion, or is this a finance discussion? Is this a facilities discussion, or is this a finance discussion? And so we were just noting about how much potential overlap there is, and how we need to make sure that we draw clearer lines between the two.
I like that clarity. I think that the question would be if, when you cross over, is to not have the discussion, and then that's clarity in growing as a team, and also asking that team, does it do the work that we asked it to do, because it is not, if it's double functioning, then it hasn't found its path yet. At this time, it's still one of our advisory committees, and so it is still on as one that we would fill tonight. To decide whether or not to, to not have that committee, instead have just one committee, would take a board conversation, which would go back to another, to the next meeting at the very earliest. I would also recommend that some of these committees, I'll use policy, because of the nature of policies that we're going through, we added extra meetings, because we just could not get the work done in the, in the amount of time. I would say that originally, this team was not to meet as often and as frequently, and that may also help with more clarity on what its purpose is, if it's meeting less often in facility, finance audit continues to meet on its frequency, because obviously, it has more, it has more monthly responsibilities. I'm back to now, if I, anybody else wish to talk, speak to this? We are back to Laura, Britt, Katie, and Justin.
I guess I would just like to say that I would really appreciate the opportunity to join this committee. I, I felt like I was always wondering what was happening in this committee when I wasn't in it, and would like to be a advocate and a voice for our community.
Thank you very much.
Maybe in the spirit of compromise, to close the loop here, as we talk about succession planning, as a possible solution, with Justin maybe taking on some additional responsibilities going forward, this might be a good time for him to also hand off some responsibilities to Laura, but that's just a, just a possible solution.
Thank you for that. Awareness, wow, look at you, already, there you go. Go ahead.
Well, I guess I still feel that policy, or the, I'm sorry, the facility advisory is still an important committee, and moving forward, it's going to be less and less meetings, but I still think it's important that they do meet. And that was one of the main reasons why I was willing to pull my name off of it, as much as I'd like to follow it through, but I will be on the finance audit anyway, so I think with that, as, as Justin would have called it, a little bit of overlap, I think that fits right in there. So I was very comfortable pulling my name off, so.
Thank you very much for that. We are somewhat at a.
Point Director, Val.
Yes.
May I suggest we move on to the other committees and come back to this one?
That's a wonderful idea, thank you very much. Let's put a pause on this. Thank you for that recommendation. Let's go ahead and go then to venture academics advisory. Let's go down the list. We have Barry?
No.
Okay, we have Britt?
Yes.
We have Evan?
Yes.
Myself, no. Laura?
No.
Oh, I missed Justin, sorry, Justin?
No, thank you.
And then we have Midhat?
Yes.
So we have Britt, Midhat, and Evan. Any others interested? This is an outstanding group, and thank you for that report this evening, it was inspiring. So we will go forward with that one, with the three of them. Lynn Mar High School Counselors Advisory, right now, we have Midhat. Would anyone else choose to be on that?
I always like to clarify on this one, that I attend those meetings in my, like, my day job capacity, so we can only have two members participate as board members, because I'm already there, but not in my board capacity.
Thank you very much for that clarity as a conflict. I'll gladly, that's one of my favorite meetings too, so I'll gladly continue on if there's not a second person. All right, thank you. The two of us are on that one. Medco Community Promise.
Katie, can you clarify which two for that?
Oh, Midhat and Katie. Thank you for asking. Medco Community Promise, let's go down the list, or should I do it? Let's do it this way. Who would like to be on this committee? Would you please speak up?
Every year, I feel like Barry gets this, I just want to be part of it too, just to.
You can actually have it.
She was trying to, I think she was going to do it with you.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Together, that's okay.
Yeah, I want us to, I want to learn from you, Barry.
There you go. That's, that's a great example of a four and a two.
Medco is a very important part of our community, in all sincerity.
And their facility is amazing. That's a great example of a four and a two experience there, so thank you very much.
Old guy, old guy, young lady.
Oh my gosh, there you go.
All right, all right, geez.
All right, we're going to move, we're going to continue to move on to Lynn County Conference Board.
Can you clarify the difference between the Lynn County Conference Board and the Cedar Rapids Conference Board? Because this is the first time I've ever seen them, like, two names.
They are separate, so Lynn County, of course, is the county supervisors are involved, and all of the school board members of the whole county.
Right, that's the one I always thought it was, so what's the other one?
But then the city comes right in, they're both the same time. One starts and the end, and the other one, sometimes we're there 10 minutes total, sometimes we're there a couple hours. And I was actually put on a committee, a six-year committee, believe it or not, on the city conference board, that I'd be happy to walk away from.
So this one actually makes sense for the same person, because they're at the same time, and it's basically the same meeting one after another. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
There's no reason to, yeah, double, yeah. But if there's anybody else that would like those roles, feel free.
All right, so we're still on the Lynn County Conference Board. I have an interest from Barry. Anyone else?
I'd be interested.
Awesome. All right, so we have Barry and Evan would be interested in Lynn County Conference Board. Is there a third? If not, let's continue to move on to the Cedar Rapids Conference Board.
If it's, if it's the same meeting, I mean, I put my name for the Cedar Rapids Conference Board, I can either duck out of it, or get added to the other.
Well, it's both there, so we could do, okay, so it actually looks as if your interest is the three of you for both of those. Does anyone else have any interest in either one of those? If not, I think that would be lovely.
Are we keeping three for those? In the past, I think there's only been one member.
It's only one.
Okay, well then, you guys get to duke it out.
I will pass on.
I'm, I'm very happy to defer, because I've done it for a number of years.
All right, so.
As long as Barry's willing to, you know, let me ask him some questions, I feel fine taking that on.
So Evan, you would take Lynn County, and Midhat would take Cedar Rapids?
No. No, no, Evan is taking both.
I can take both, and like I said, as long as Barry's willing to let me ask him some questions, we should be fine.
That's great mentorship, and thank you for asking for that mentorship as well. Great mentors are sought out, Barry. There you go. All right, we are to legislative liaison. Asking for those who are interested in this one, please.
I am.
We have Britt?
I'm interested in the like, if we need a third person capacity.
All right, Laura?
I'd also be interested.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to put a pause on that one. How many, does that take up to, that's just a two. Evan, I, I'm going to bring something up that I did the first time I got on too. You'll note that you are on several of these, and just keeping that in mind, I do like the, back with Laura and Britt, you have, somebody has two years left on the board, somebody has four years on the board. Evan, I'm just going to encourage you to consider, you got yourself down a lot.
I'll withdraw myself here.
There, I'm just, just giving you that out, buddy. All right, so legislative liaison, I have Britt and Laura, is that correct? That gets us back to facilities advisory, and as I'm looking at our list, again, I'm just going to say, they're not in order of the most important, but they are the ones that kind of steer the ship a little bit, so finance audit, policy, and then facilities. Regardless of whether the future of facilities advisory, we still need three individuals on that. The overlap, and Britt, you are the one that would be serving on two. By not serving on both of those, that would allow six board members to have a little more say on those organs, on that structure. Would you be willing to?
It's fine.
Thank you. That means on facilities advisory now, we have Laura, Katie, and Justin. Now that you're taking a pause, everybody take your pause. And I got all my peeps that were writing down more information as I was scribbling and scratching over here. Are we good? I am going to read them out loud, and please let me know if we can confer this before we do the motion, so that I don't mix this up. Finance audit, Barry, Britt, and Midhat. Policy, Laura, Katie, and Evan. CTE, Midhat, Evan, and Justin. CYAC, Justin, Midhat, and Evan. Facilities advisory, Laura, Katie, Justin. Venture advisory, Britt, Midhat, and Evan. School counselors, Midhat and Katie. Medco, Midhat and Barry. Oh, Midhat, you're, oh my goodness, babe. I know, I know. Lynn County Conference Board, Evan. Cedar Rapids Conference Board, Evan. Legislative liaisons, Laura and Britt. Were there any corrections?
I make a motion to approve the representatives to serve on the various district board committees and advisories as discussed.
Second. We have a motion by Barry and a second by Britt. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to say that I appreciated the pre-meeting, like, interest, or, or like.
The forms.
Yes, the form that we used. I appreciated that process improvement. Yay, technology.
I appreciated too, that, that information was a personal reflection, and an opportunity for us all to do our homework, and make sure that if you said yes, it wasn't one of those, will somebody do it. Instead, if you've, if you've been listening to our conversation so far, or viewing as our online guests, you'll note that that was definitely a desire by this board to run the business of the board, and I thank you all for not just filling a spot, but actively wanting the spots for which you will be serving. Is there any further discussion?
One more comment for improvement. I think that going forward, we could also maybe list the number of members for each board, that would, I think, give some, because I, I was unaware that the Lynn County and the Cedar Rapids Conference Board was a single person, but I think that would give more clarity for us new folks.
You know, you know, thank you, because I just always thought Barry said yes, and we moved on. So thank you very, very much on that, we will do that.
Me too, I thought he was just the lonely guy doing it all by himself.
There you go.
That's what I thought was going on.
I think that those two should just be listed as one, too, as if it's the same meeting, like, less confusion.
Part one, part two.
Like, just listed as one.
Thank you very much for that clarity as well, Britt. Is there any further discussion?
I, I just want to make a clarifying remark here for, for those who are listening online. You mentioned about the pre-meeting, the survey.
Yeah, and I shouldn't have mumbled with that, and I apologize.
Let me clarify as president, there was no pre-meeting. We were given an opportunity to do our homework, and in that homework, a Google Doc that only Amy saw the results of each one of the individual's desires. You could only see your choices, you could not banter back and forth with anyone prior to this meeting, nor did you banter back and forth prior to this meeting. Hence the reason, each position, although we may have expressed interest, I went through each name and invited each person to consider or reconsider since you filled out your Google Doc desires. Thank you, Justin. There was no pre-meeting, there was an opportunity to get your homework done, and make sure that you understood the expectations of each position.
I apologize for the miscommunication, and Justin, I know I've done the same thing when I've observed kind of those miscommunication things, so thank you for taking the time to point that out. I too try to be mindful of the clarity and transparency to make sure we communicate accurately.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All right, let's go ahead, we have a motion, a second, and we've had our discussion. All those in favor of the committees as presented and the representation, please say yes.
Yes.
If there is any opposed? And the motion carries, all right. We are now moving on. We need a motion to approve the Grantwood Area District Five Director. Could someone please make that motion?
Make a motion to support Deborah Stewart Bowman to serve as Director of District Five for the Grantwood Area Education Agency Board of Directors for a two-year term.
We have a motion by Britt.
Second.
And a second by Barry. Is there any discussion?
Just like to clarify that there was only one person, so we're not making a choice, we're just confirming the one candidate.
And is this, isn't this a new position, or is this something we've done in the past?
We've done it in the past.
Good discussion.
The Grantwood AEA process has changed though, and this is part of that legislative package a couple of sessions ago, where there'll be four superintendents that are appointed to the board, as well as five different directors, so it is moving to a different makeup.
Thanks for the clarification.
Jim Green did it in the past.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
What information do we have about Deborah Bowman? Sorry if I missed that, I'm sorry.
We don't.
We don't.
We're just kind of told who the person is.
There's only one person on the ballot.
They, I, I would like to clarify that she was on the ballot on November 4th. There was one name listed for this director position, and so she was elected, she was publicly elected, along with a few other folks.
Thank you, and so her information would have been available on all the candidate information, that is what we would know of her, and that she was elected.
We're strictly confirming that.
We are confirming it. Correct.
Yeah, she's already been duly elected.
Yes, this does require, after we've had our discussion, it will require a roll call